All right. Phone off, seven.
All right, it is seven o'clock. It is our regular May meeting of the-
Why is it muted?
Goodfield Township Planning Commission will start with the, uh, pledge to the flags. Hit up.
My allegiance to the flag.
I'm gonna do the pledge of allegiance, okay.
But which is then, one nation under God-
You should be able to go, Terry. Get the volume up, Terry, that's the top bar, the volume, the volume, the-
Yes, the volume is up.
Okay, whoever's talking about the volume on the Zoom, please, you're coming through live here, so if you would mute your mics, I'd appreciate it, thank you. All right.
Maybe the, maybe the volume isn't up.
Or not.
Top bar, Terry, the plus sign, there's a plus sign, a minus sign, and then sound off. One, two, three, four, five over, maybe, six from the lap, somewhere in the middle, just the left of center, I believe. Just the left of center, Terry.
You can mute them or-
I have that button on, it's not, um, I can't hear it.
Now, where's his laptop?
You have it up to a hundred percent?
No, I can't get it up, it's not moving up.
Yes, Terry, the, the, the plus-
You know what, I'm just gonna forget about this whole fucking idea, just forget about it.
You want me to come over and do it for you, Terry?
I thought you might wanna sit in and listen to it. Hopefully, they can't hear me right now.
They may be able to.
Yeah, we can. That sounds muted. No. At least he didn't turn his head into a cat. Okay. All right, first thing on, uh, first thing on today's, uh, agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April eight, two thousand twenty-one meeting. Uh, had a chance to take a look at it, everybody had a chance to take a look at it? They are, uh-
I hit that button, I don't know why it didn't work for me. If it works for me.
In fine and, uh, full detail here from, uh, Mr. Karasak, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Uh, okay, seconded, uh, by Dave Strunk.
I don't want them to see me.
Can we, uh, correct the spelling of my name? Tell me how to spell this, B O W Y P R.
B O W, I have B O Y, don't I?
Yeah.
B O W Y P R.
B O W Y P R, got it.
Please, you don't fix your names till you're here at least a year, but, okay, we'll do it this time. All right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, okay, that is taken care of. Now, uh, we have our agenda, any public comments on just the agenda itself, we'll get to the individual items, anything on the agenda itself? Okay? We have no plans to act on, but we do have, let's go down to number seven here, uh, un- unfinished business. And we'll start with the, uh, matter of Andrew Shakitis, the preliminary and final, uh, minor subdivision plan. Uh, Mr. Tressler, he did some work on this here.
I did.
Yeah.
You asked that I research our ordinance regarding private access drives-
Yeah.
And what the regulations might be. I did do that, and I submitted a letter to the planning commission dated May tenth.
Yes.
Hopefully, you all have a copy in your packet. Um, the ordinance says ba- basically two things.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one, you can have a private access drive as long as it serves no more than four residential lots. Uh, and if that is satisfied, then the second requirement is that it be improved, whether it's gonna be private or not, it must be improved to township standards.
To township standards. But they don't want it, they, they obviously don't want ones like, wh- where I live, there's seven of us on-
Right.
On that old lane from the twos, yeah.
Now, the twist that we have to consider here for the Shakitis proposal is that currently there are three lots on the existing private access road. However, one of those lots has two dwelling units on it. So, there are four residential dwelling units already fronting on a private access road.
I'm Andrew Shakitis, is it okay to comment?
Yeah, just give us one second, let him go through it, yeah, then Andrew, you can do some second.
So, so the question, I think, one of the questions that has to be addressed is, does the ordinance intend that there should only be- The, the, how should I say, the, the reading the ordinance on its face would say that you can have four lots, and it doesn't speak to dwelling units. However, is the intent of the ordinance to limit it to four dwelling units? Or does it mean what it says literally, four lots? That's the one interpretation.
Either way, it applies.
Not if you create the fourth lot, and then you would have five, well, you would have five.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, 'cause it's, 'cause it's in, 'cause it's in an R one, but you're thinking of a single, single-family house per lot, this just happens to have two.
Well, it does say four lots, it doesn't say residential.
That's right, it depends on whether you think it should be a literal interpretation of the ordinance, or whether you're digging deeper into the intent. I'm not making a suggestion one way or the other.
So, you were saying that it has to be brought up to township standards, the road does?
But the road-
The road has to.
Yes.
Yeah, that was my recollection too, from the, yeah.
Regardless of how many lots you have there-
Mm-hmm.
It does have to be brought up to township standards. Now, I would argue that if you're making a road to township standards, what difference does it make how many lots you have on it? Is that a sort of argument?
No, that's, that's because, one is whether you, you're gonna have a dedication to the township or not, that's, that's-
True, true, and who's gonna maintain it?
Yeah, that's right.
That's what, that's usually what happens with a private access road, is you get into those issues.
Sounds like a cul-de-sac would be critical.
Yes.
How you gonna turn a snowplow around?
That is correct.
And what's the, what's the logic to be, you know, tithing it to township standards for emergency vehicles?
For, for, primarily, there's, there's several reasons, emergency vehicles obviously would be one, and I even think that's mentioned in the ordinance. Uh, maintenance is obvious an issue on private roads, if they don't get maintained, and then people come to the township, the township isn't doing something about it. Uh, and you want them to be built to the specifications of a, uh, a road, or they're gonna deteriorate rapidly over a period of time.
Well, even if it's built to township standards, if you find, it could still be deteriorating, it could be if they don't take care of it.
But at least, at least they're starting off on the right foot.
They would have to adjust their right-of-ways, which this doesn't have.
Not yet, no.
It doesn't have the right-of-way with, and, and the, the only, look, the two dwelling units on one is something, the only, the only way I think you could massage that is if one of the, is, is if one of the conditions was that that lot can never be further subdivided and turned into two houses, uh, one house on one lot. Into two, all right, which, again, is gonna create the second problem, which you're now gonna have more-
More than, more than, uh, but the, the simple thing is, it has, it would have to be brought up to spec, and it would end up with more than you'd allow, I don't see how we can approve this.
John, where is the fourth lot, it's not shown on this particular drawing?
The, the drawing does create the fourth lot, but in creating the fourth lot, you would have five residential dwelling units, because there are two already on one of the lots.
Yeah.
Andrew Shakitis.
Mm-hmm.
Two residential dwelling units in one lot on the property, yes, and two residential Shakitis.
Mm-hmm.
The seven feet of track. The driveway for the one existing lot, through Franklin Hill Road, it doesn't have to be brought, there are only three residences.
Well, that's under discussion, yes.
Okay, but I'm saying, the other residence is not, the, the property that it's on, the total seven acres, this driveway comes out directly on the Franklin Hill.
Is it possible that it could come out on Hidden Valley Drive? But, but there's no, there's no access from that dwelling to Hidden Valley.
The driveway from Franklin Hill Road directly back.
Yeah, but it's an open field, you could, you could go to the other road, you could make it all the way around, you could make it, you could make it right away. If you're not, it's not like it's a waterfall, you're not, you can make a driveway, sure. Well, not, not quite, but okay. The existing, the existing access, yes, 'cause it goes straight back.
I suppose that the planning commission, one consideration could be a note on the plan that that dwelling unit that currently has access to Franklin Hill Road could never have access to Hidden Valley.
That doesn't change the, the upgrade of the road, does it?
No.
That doesn't change the requirement that the road be upgraded. It, it, it removes the question as to whether you have five lots taking access on Hidden Valley or only four, which the ordinance contemplates and permits four. I mean, the question of whether five could be permitted was questionable, but that, looks like that question could be removed from the table, with some notations, some covenants.
Correct me, the old house that's on the, is the long driveway off Franklin Hill? That's, that's not, you're, you don't contemplate changing that.
That's my property, I have, no, it's my-
Separate thing.
Yes.
So, the property you're discussing has how many residences on it presently?
Hidden Valley Drive has three-
Three residents.
Lots.
And the fourth lot, vacant lot, you contemplate one lot?
First, out of information, Hidden Valley Drive has been township road until nineteen seventy-three. Township run it back to the homeowners instead of payers. So, this is a natural position that was there. Okay. We did something like, we have ten acres, two acres of it, the two, the separating office, the front, a little bit, but it would, that's the volume, you know, to get better use out of it. I assume it'll be a residential house, it's possible.
So, there would then be how many residences on Hidden Valley Drive?
Four.
Which is permitted by ordinance if it meets, if the road is upgraded to-
Upgraded and brought up to township standards.
So, do I make a motion? Do you have a discussion, gentlemen?
Do you have anything else you wanna add?
Uh, well, I was not here for the last meeting, my understanding, I hired George Fench for this, my understanding was that he was gonna be at that meeting and this meeting. I have not been able to get in contact with him this week, so I don't know, I, my guess is that he has not responded to your, uh, on the last I spoke to him, he said he tried to contact, get it over. Somebody didn't, to get some clarification. So, I'm working on that, I just came to this meeting hoping to get, uh, so, so try to ask, talk back to them, we kind of have information I, with information I can, so I can kind of, uh, push this to Fench, get this, next month, I guess. Do we take one of them?
I was just gonna say, so would you like, would you like us to put it on the June meeting then, Andrew?
Well, that's fine, I mean, if you, you got my thing, it was all that one, and you said this, um, I would, I would, if he's on, if, if he's gonna address your other, whatever, that, if it were twenty-four, I would-
Yes.
On the others, if he can address this at the same time, I'm asking you, you're telling me this is a matter of you guys, you have, you're just-
No, no, he'd have to respond to some of those.
He's gotta bring the drawings up to snuff, right, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a, we have a lot of technical comments that must be addressed.
Right.
Well, what's our timeframe on this, I think?
The timeframe is July first.
Okay, so we can put it on June, so we're still okay for that.
So, we're telling it June, and the supervisor just have to get it in during the June meeting.
During one of their June meetings, right.
Right, but we're okay with that.
All right, well, they'll do that, then I'll, okay.
I'm just asking if he has to respond to this, if he can help, like, to let him know how to respond.
He'll, he'll know, yeah, yeah, he knows, he, he and, he and John will, can contact with each other, he's got a-
He's got John's first letter, and now he's got this one.
Yeah, yeah, he, he's done, yeah, George can do it. All right, so I'll make a move that we table this matter then to the, uh, to the June meeting. All right, phone saver? Alright, phone saver?
Hi.
Whoop, another party here.
Michael?
Hey, there you are.
Hey, I've been here.
Okay. Let me see what date that is.
It's June ten.
Hang on. June ten? Okay. Put it on that meeting, that...
Okay.
I'm not a, I'm not a hundred percent certain, that's not the date the school board's gonna have my son's high school graduation, so, so somebody else...
Well, I can also tell you that I, I believe I have an expanding zoning duty that same night.
Okay.
They have one every, you know, every third blue moon.
Oh, one of those, yes.
So...
Okay.
But it's any of that.
But it'll be June ten.
Well, we could possibly reschedule it, I think.
Yeah, we could if we had to, we, but that's, but that's, let's, let's see, I'm not sure what the school board has set it to, yeah, so, we're okay, so we'll move it to June. Alright, thank you all. Uh, where do my things go, table to June. Now, second thing on our unfinished business, the discussion of dangerous struct- uh, structure options here, and then we'll get to you, Charlie.
Can I, what it works? I wonder if we can, uh, move up the Independence Road mixed use, I see a lot of people are interested in...
No, we're, we're gonna do it this way.
Okay.
Yeah. Alright, the one thing, I will, structure one, is, uh, I think we can kind of dispose of quickly, I, I didn't realize until I got Julie's email today that the township has that in its place. So, I'd actually like to, like to move the discussion on the dangerous structures options to the June meeting, or to a July meeting, either, either way. And, uh, Robert, I'd like Ken to be there, please, for the, for when we, if we can get Ken Wolf, if we can ask Ken to come to, uh, uh, the June or July meeting, whichever it'll be, so we can talk about the dangerous structures, 'cause I didn't know that we had that tucked in our ordinance somewhere. And I'd like to, and I'd like to ask him about it and see what we can do to... Just say the June meeting, is that okay with everybody?
Is this it here, or is this a sample, something else?
Um, let me see which one that is, that's, that's midfield, the one I had passed around in an, in an email to discuss was one that they had kicked, that they had in, in Stroud.
Oh, which one, yeah, I got that one.
In Stroud, yeah, that was the Stroud, but this one, uh, Julie had sent around to us.
On the top, you'll see it's a, yeah, I do see that, no, yeah.
Well, you should know, Mr. Chair, that I spoke with Jacob about this before, uh, the meeting began, and he said that Ken was going to be here, but apparently some...
Okay.
Underseen or unaffected matter occurred, so he could not.
Alright, well, that's, that may be a lesser, is he meeting too, that might be a better time to, to have that discussion. Alright, so, we got Ken there, alright, for June. Okay, new business.
You made the motion and seconded on that.
Oh, I made the motion, I didn't even ask for a second, I'm sorry. Everybody second on that?
Second.
Alright, Mitch has got this one, we'll get the new guy. Alright, all, all in favor? Aye, alright.
Aye.
Thank you, Michael. Alright, new business, uh, we have a number of things here under the new business, but I know, Charlie, you wanted to talk to us, 'cause you're here for the, the county planning, right? Why don't you, why don't you do that before we launch into this?
Yes, uh, over the course of the last month, um, Shawnee, Shawnee Valley, Shawnee Village, two PRDs in the township that were in Shawnee Village in nineteen seventy-four, and Shawnee Valley in nineteen eighty-eight. And, uh, under, uh, ten, as they used for spending code, the potential tool of a PRD, it ends your zoning map. Uh, and your zoning map is never amended. So, what we have done is working with the, the county planning commission to do an overlay of the PRDs on, we only have one big one, but...
Okay.
It's, uh, Robert for the supervisor, so they need ultimately to sign it.
I think I have a copy, I've got a copy, Charlie, I'm gonna send it to Charlie, so. If you look in the, um, south and...
The south, my, I'll come here, it's, uh, it's, it's a gray dash mark overlay, uh...
Those are the things that are PRDs?
Those are the PRDs.
Oh, is this the same PRD, is this the same PRD that was in front of us about ten, twelve years ago, or an update on the, what you guys were doing?
That's the Shawnee Valley portion, yeah, that was, uh, you know, that was here, and right now, uh, there's a new owner of the regaining order, they're gonna evaluate the building, right? Another reason why we wanted to get...
Well, I can't hear you, hang on a second. Okay.
Uh, another reason why we wanted to get this map corrected, of their, the new owner for, major of stage one, and for stage four. Well, about five years ago, stages two and three, uh, were conveyed only to the park service now, so part of the PRD has open space.
Oh, the side of the, no.
Yeah, we've done that way, I understand, so they could make connections, but the PRDs are supposed to be all connected together. And this starts, the Shawnee Village one, it was far down, it's about across from, uh, Smithville School. Way up, Shawnee Valley, Hollow Road, there's a, a piece that will be, I'm sure before you, sometime next year, uh, in stage four, which is on top of the ski area, basically. And, uh, stage one D, which is behind Shawnee Village.
Oh, passing there.
And, uh, this, so what we're, what we have together here is not changing anything that was ever done, it's simply complying with the empty thing, which that, that, uh, it's supposed to be on your zoning map. And, uh, the underlying zones still, even affect, um, they don't have any effect on anything that's happened now, but in unusual events, that the PRD could be terminated, or the developer who has the remaining pieces abandoned it, and the underlying zoning would kick back into place.
But otherwise, the PRD is what trumps.
The PRD trumps it, yes, because you got the findings of fact, and the law that, that were issued for Shawnee Village in, in, uh, nineteen seventy-four, and, uh, that's what goes out. Shawnee Valley is, is, amendments to the Shawnee Valley were done, yes, about ten years ago. In the board.
Okay. So, what do we need to do, Charlie?
I don't know that you need to do anything, the, the only remaining act would be for the supervisors to execute the original here, so it becomes officially, is, is also includes, you can see in the red, your ED zone, that was last year.
We don't need to, we don't need to, the change to the zoning, we don't need to advertise, that's already, it's, we're not making any changes, we're just...
No, you're, you're adding something that was supposed to have been added...
Forty years ago.
Seventy-four and nineteen eighty-eight, it ever was.
Do you, are you agree with this? Are you, you look at it?
We, uh, we talked about this on Tuesday, Mr. Chair, at the board of supervisors, I mean, Charlie was also there, and there was some discussion as whether advertising would be needed because of this being a map change, but it's not a map change, as far as I'm concerned.
It was a map that was never changed.
Something there that was, that should have been there all along, so, I, I don't have a problem with, with, uh, not advertising. The absence of original, that will work to, go to Robert there.
I think a motion that we, updating the zoning map.
Alright, he's made a motion that he, that we recommend updating the zoning map? Mitch, second? Any discussion, Michael?
No, makes sense.
Makes sense, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
I have a question, though, about this red area here, this, we have an ED, I thought the ED was only on Wilford Road.
No, no, it wasn't, they, we did it all the way around.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, we did the triangular part.
Whole thing, okay, I thought it was over and over there.
That's where we started.
Triangle was four forty-seven, two oh nine, two oh nine.
Roughly the two, two oh nine, that's what we're, yeah.
This is not, this is not that.
No, I know, I'm just, it was an off...
This River Road, right?
Yes, but it was a tangent question, it had nothing to do with the discussion.
Okay.
It's like River Road and, and the Mount Ebo, that area of the...
That's all, no. So, we're, we're talking about the red.
No, I was asking a question about the red, it had nothing to do with...
About the red? Yeah, okay.
Had nothing to do with his, his presentation.
Alright, then the next thing.
And that is correct, that's the...
Yeah. Um... Good day, alright, I guess, anybody here for the Wolf Hollow lot? Who's here for this?
Yes, I'm here, John Zorn from Barry Ice and Associates, representing Barry Teal.
Oh, I can't understand that, I'm sorry. John Zorn, okay, uh, um, alright, your connection is terrible, what, okay, what do we have on this?
We have a sketch plan, a sketch plan review, it's, it's probably ninety for a sketch plan.
Okay, where did it go now?
Letter is dated May tenth.
Let's check out this, ah, I put it together, okay. So, what do we need to do with this, John?
Well, I...
Our client is looking, I'm sorry, someone else speaking?
Okay, I'm sorry, we have two Johns, John, John Zorn, your, your connection is terrible, it is cutting in and out, and it is impossible to hear very well. Are you, something, can you adjust yourself so your, maybe your, uh, cell service or something is a little better, because it, we're, we're losing like every other syllable.
Is this any better?
That's better.
Okay, I went to a different mic.
Okay, that's better, alright, so, we're gonna have John Tressler first, what, what do we have to do with this, or what are we doing with it?
Uh, I think, uh, the applicant submitted this to get feedback before they went to the extent of submitting a formal, uh, subdivision land development plan. We've identified, uh, based on the sketch plan, that, that they're gonna need some variances, uh, just to move forward, and I think there's at least three of them. And, I don't know how much effort, either the planning commission, or the applicant wants to put into this before...
Well, which ones are the variances here?
It would be number four, five, and six. Uh, lot areas are small, uh...
Yeah, they're less than an acre, forty-two thousand square feet.
The depth, the depth are not in compliance with minimum depth, uh, or front yard setbacks, so, I mean, they're, they're not compliant lots that are being proposed.
Okay, so, we couldn't, we couldn't even recommend approval on them anyway?
That's correct, without a variance.
Without a variance, so they have to go to a vari, they've gotta go to, uh, zoning hearing board first, no matter what. Okay.
Why can't they make them come on?
I, look into that, we could ask the applicant's engineer.
Yes, John, yeah, John Zorn.
Yes.
Hello. Um, have you, uh, have you seen, uh, Mr. Tressler's May tenth letter?
Yes, I, I looked through it.
Alright.
And we understand that there are zoning issues, and variances will be required.
Okay. Um, are you planning on seeking these variances first, before you come back and, and file your plan and, and get a more formal review from us?
I guess we're, we're looking for, um, do you feel this would be realistic? Our client doesn't wanna spend, you know, a lot of money until she knows that this would be viable.
Oh, well, that's, you can't ask us that, I mean...
Financial hardship with the variance.
Yeah, uh, I mean, that's really, I mean, that's not, that's not a, an advisory opinion that we can just hand out here, the zoning hearing board is, is a, a separate body in the township, they got their, they have their own, uh...
Okay.
quasi judicial authority with these things, it's not anything, we can, we have literally no control over, over it at all.
Over the, over the zoning, yes.
Yeah, over the zoning hearing board, which hears the matters for, for variances.
He's asking if, that he got the variance, what, if there's any initial feelings from the planning commission?
Yes.
Well, I'm not sure we could have any, 'cause we'd need the rest of the, if you get, you get the variance, we'd, we'd have that at the township, and then you would submit the rest of your, your plan for, for a full review, but I mean, without a variance, it's a nonstarter. So, I guess your question, your answer is, if...
We've done, especially before, we had done recommendations, one of the recommendations would, of course, here, be that the variances would be required.
Uh...
Part, that would be part of our...
Yeah, we've done that before.
Conditional approval, so to speak.
We could, but he's saying he doesn't wanna do, he doesn't wanna submit the plan and the engineering and go through all that. That's, he's, he's asking sort of part B first. Which I, which I can certainly appreciate.
Yeah.
I mean, I can certainly appreciate that, but it's not really set up that way.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, what, you know, generally, you know, we'll, we'll take whatever plans that come in front of us, and, you know, John Tressler goes through them, and Ron Karasak answers our legal questions, and we, and we, you know, we sort of kick them around and think about conditions and so forth, but, to be honest with you, at this point, it's a nonstarter, unless you get the variances, so, I, I think you really need to start there.
Okay. Is it her other, um, her other item was the driveway? Because this sits on a private road, going through someone else's property, and it's roughly nine hundred and something feet long. Um, you know, what, what would have to be done with that, can anything done, done with that?
It would have to be made up to township specs, it was the same thing as the, uh, as the subdivision question we had before, it'd have to be, would they need a thirty-three foot cartway? I forget exactly, but...
No, it's gotta be actually, most of the fifty foot right of way.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it would need, it would, it would need to be made up to town, to township specifications, in case it ever needed to be dedicated to the township, or was to be offered to the township. So, I mean, you, you may wanna just figure that cost in there as well, which will be, you know, significant.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Alright?
Okay, yeah, that's kinda where we're at, we're just seeing what we can do. I mean, if, if the zoning hearing board, I will definitely talk with the client, uh, let her know what's going on, and if she wants to pursue this any further, you know, if she wants to spend the money on it, then, then we will go from there.
Yep, yeah, we'll have to take, tear the legal part first.
The motion is to strike the agenda, and...
I don't think we need to strike it from the agenda.
Oh.
This, because we don't have to take any actual action on it, we, we've discussed it on the agenda, I don't think we have to do it.
The sketch plan, so it's not a form.
Yeah, we don't, we, we had time, our, our timeframes haven't, haven't started to run, alright. Mr. Zorn, thank you.
Okay, thank you, bye.
Alright. Um, Independence Road mixed use preliminary land development plan. Alright, anybody here for the developer?
I was informed by the developer's engineer that they would not be attending tonight.
Okay.
Now, it's only on for acceptance, you can neither decide to accept it or not.
Well, yeah, 'cause this is, that's right, this one came in that it would, wait a second there.
I will look at our agenda, I mean, our minutes.
We recommend that be accepted.
You recommend that the, that it be accepted, and then you go through your...
I make a, I make a motion that we accept the Independence Road mixed use application.
Yeah, the application for review, okay, I'll second that.
I have this question.
Yes.
This is the one that, um, doesn't meet the zoning, right? That it doesn't meet the requirements of the ED, with the twenty-five acres and...
There is no twenty-five acres in the ED, I checked it after the last meeting, it's in a mixed use, but this is not a mixed use development, this is under the ED zone, so there is no twenty-five acres. It has, uh, I think a lot of acres, easy, thirty thousand feet or forty thousand feet per lot area, other than that, the ED zone is meaningless, if you need to have twenty-five acres in any case you. So, and in fact, an amendment is being considered now to make that very clear, that the twenty-five acres is not, even under the mixed use, is gone. Because you don't need mixed use with the economic development zone.
Correct.
According to the amendment that they've been talking about, maybe...
So, what, refresh my memory, and what's the definition of an ED? Economic development, we, 'cause that was one we had the long discussion on.
Well, that's the new ordinance.
Right. But what's the definition of ED?
Taking note, can't believe I forgot my iPad.
You want the definition of mixed use, David?
No, no, ED.
I'll figure one as such, so I can tell you what's required. I'll pick one as such so I can tell you what's required.
Yes, that's the way.
I have the ordinance here that will- And that's it. It gives a advancing definition, you know, the incentivized development option.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the greater flexibility of development alternatives and encourage development of underutilized properties within the township, and then it goes on other things that says here that typically the project must consist without limitation of a minimum two uses. And uses proposed must be permitted under the underlying district, which is, then you give that use. That's about it. Then they have design standards and other things, but that's about all it says. So it's not- not as clear as saying, well, this is the actual stuff. So, Ron, does someone who owns property within what is now the ED zone- Do they have the option to- to go underneath that overlay or that ED zone and to use the benefits and/or the- the, uh, parameters of the gateway zone?
I believe so, but I haven't checked that because the mixed use, that was section three oh five of the ordinance.
Right.
The ED zone incentivized option is section three oh six.
Right.
So there is some confusion there, and that's why I told the supervisors I would prefer to get this clear.
And that's why the twenty-five acres-
Because if you use the three oh five, then you need the twenty-five acres.
That's right.
David is right on that one.
Right.
Because that was the Smithfield one. And under Smithfield, even if this changes, they'll be able to continue to work under section three oh five as it was enacted.
Right.
Can't change, can't change.
Now, my question is this. In mixed use, it occurs to me that there was some sort of ratio required, that a certain amount of had to be commercial and a certain amount then residential. And I was always under the impression that the mix had to be more biased toward commercial than residential.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing that anywhere in the ordinance. I know that, again, these supervisors are talking about making an amendment to make that clear, that you can't have more than seventy-five percent residential.
Seventy-five?
That's what they're talking about. So that you don't have someone just saying, "I'm gonna put up this, uh, two thousand square foot cigar shop and then buy ten bazillion apartments in it." Uh, so that-
What's the essence of what this is?
Well, I don't know what the percentage is, but that's not the law. That's what's being talked about.
Right.
This doesn't require any special percentage, as far as I know. But, yes. Ken could weigh in on this if he wants to.
Well, my only comment, are we talking about the specifics now, rather than the general, what the law allows? You wanna talk about what this project planned, this project division?
Well, what we're doing right now is accepting the plans. We're not reviewing it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're not even reviewing this. We're just accepting that it's going to be reviewed.
Well, I have one question about that.
Yeah.
Only one. The last time we looked at it, here's our minutes.
Yes.
Uh, because the- apparently because the engineer or the surveyor or the- the engineer or neither the engineer nor the applicant was here last time.
Yes.
And so what we did was we removed it from further agendas.
Yeah, but now it's filed.
Understand that.
That was a sketch plan.
This is a- okay, formally filed plan.
Okay. Yeah. Now we have to do it through- now that's gotta go through the review and timeline process.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. So we had the motion to accept the filing. I think it was seconded. Did you second it?
I think we seconded.
Michael's seconded, I thought.
Nothing like that. Michael made it. I'll second-
You seconded.
I'll second it. Okay, okay, I'll second it.
Just one more- one more point on this. Before we start reviewing it, we should all reread section three oh five in our ordinance before we come back to our next meeting in June, just a recommendation.
Right.
So the clock will start running in June, Emran?
Uh, no, the clock starts tonight.
You accept it tonight. The clock starts tonight.
Okay.
Uh, because August eleventh.
Right.
Yeah, but, you know, basically you have most of the stuff.
Yeah, we have the stuff. Alright. All in favor of accepting it?
Alright.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Accepted. Alright. Now, I know we have members of the public here that were coming here on this. We know. Alright, but this is, um, this is- know that this is what starts the clock for the engineer review and the rest of it. So this is the point, is your point, where these things are now going to be filed here as a township. And we'll be back here certainly in June, maybe even July by the time. This is- this is big. So this is a big- a big plan. So I wouldn't be surprised if it's a lengthy review by the township's engineers. But now you can start to stay on top of it, and there has to be then supervisory act, uh, by August, whichever, eleventh or so, okay? And in- starting at the next meeting on is when you can start to make your comments and you start putting them on the record for us, alright? Yes.
So there's no need for a sketch plan, uh, on some of those stuff?
There's never a need for a sketch plan, actually. No, some try to come in with it to try to feel us out a little bit, like you heard with the other one, but there's no particular requirement for a sketch plan. This is what starts the formal review process.
And there's no determination on which, uh, section of the town.
That's correct. That's coming up.
And we will try to determine that with Ken's help during the review process. We didn't delve into any of that. We just looked to see that the application was complete and that all the information that we would need to go through and review was provided to the township along with their fees. And once all that is received, then we recommend that the township accept it and start the review process.
That's all you've done?
That's all we did tonight.
That's all we've done.
That's it.
And then in August, what's that?
No, the- the process has to be then in front of the supervisors by August. So through our body, and then unless there's extensions and so forth.
And that's not final approval in front of the supervisor?
Supervisors would be final approval. Yes.
August is the decision.
By August, there'll be something. So starting at the next meeting is when we'll start to have the engineering review letters and so forth, and hopefully somebody from them, from whichever it is-
Liberty.
Liberty, uh, engineering comes because, uh, their plan.
John, is it logical that the next- that the submission would involve preliminary slash final?
Yes. And I, you know, I forget. I think this was just a preliminary plan. This is just a preliminary planning submission. This was not a final plan submission.
I believe your office had asked them about an MPDS permit or whatever, and I think the response back was, "Well, we're just preliminary right now. We're not there."
Yeah, I- I-
Okay, so it's gonna be longer than August.
I think it's a six-month process, under the best of circumstances, to- before the board is going to be ready to make a final decision on this. I know we're gonna have engineering comments that are gonna have to be addressed, and then that would require resubmitting the plan back to us. As Ron Karasak just commented, they have to get an MPDS, uh, permit from the, uh, county conservation district. That's typically anywhere from three to a six-month process. The board of supervisors, I don't believe, will recommend final approval until those permits are in hand. They typically do not. So all this has to take place before a final approval can be- a decision, final decision can be made.
So in the meantime, we, uh, I guess, if it's submitted and accepted, meantime you have the opportunity to probably look at it and come up with some kind of-
And it'll continue to show up on the agenda that the township publishes on its website. It'll be on.
So in the June meeting, we will have his comments, and then we'll start looking at our review, make recommendations, and then they go back and they do the drawings again. It comes up again in July. Make the extensions because they don't have things done. So it's gonna be a process.
And you're Mr. Roach from the last meeting?
So we've made the two motions and it's been accepted, right?
Yes, it's been accepted.
Okay.
That's right.
Are you gonna make a motion at table or are you gonna be giving it?
I don't think so, because we'll just- it's been accepted now.
Been accepted.
It'll just be on the- it'll just start with next month's agenda. I don't- yeah.
Okay.
Alright. Thank you, everybody. Alright, Ron, number three here, cell tower ordinances. Cell towers, excuse me.
I provided everyone, and Michael, you don't have this, but I'll send it to you. I did a memo-
Thank you.
On a thirty-page cell tower ordinance that was given to, uh, the township for review by the Coen Law Group of Pittsburgh. And I can send you one of those to look at, but it basically was a two-page process that enables the commission to perhaps review the ordinance without having to read all thirty pages. Now, I guess that's sort of not how it should be done, because I guess they're not supposed to read all thirty pages. But that being said, uh, I have the memo there, and I have read the ordinance, and although I didn't draft it, it appears to cover all of the issues that need to be covered with respect to the three types of towers, the power base, the non-power base, which is a co-location, and then the five G communication facilities. It also indicates that these must continue to be approved as a conditional use, and there are a number of engineering and other studies that must be done. It's a very comprehensive ordinance, so that-
And they're all conditional uses, Ron?
Except for the small facilities, the five G. That can just be done by permit.
Okay, 'cause that doesn't require new large towers.
No, that's basically you're just putting on telephone poles.
You're hanging them on the phone.
You usually put on telephone pole or something like that, so. So in any event, again, the Coen Law Firm specializes in this area, and the township decided to hire them in order to, uh, develop this ordinance, which it did. In fact, the township is also considering hiring them to review applications when they come in. This ordinance-
Oh, for the, uh, for the cell tower, for the community?
This ordinance permits review, uh, permits the township to hire consultants and experts to review applications and also to review whether there are possible violations, and the applicant has to reimburse the township for those costs.
Yeah, well, that makes- and that makes sense, 'cause this is out of our areas.
I'm somewhat familiar with this because I had to do the appeal for the Verizon cell tower.
Oh, okay.
I'm kinda familiar with this area, but again, it has all the right things in it. It has the shot clock, as it's called, for if it's a full tower, a hundred and fifty days. If it's a co-location, ninety days and all that other jazz.
What do we have to do tonight? Do we have to do anything?
Well, this is a zoning amendment, so this would be your review of this ordinance as an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, Robert. All of this, actually, this whole town, which, you know, are those boxes that go atop the phone poles, it's mandated by the FCC.
Right.
So we have really little control beyond what we can do here, and the Coen Law Group in Pittsburgh has become experts on this and is drafting. We're having the same thing for municipalities all across the state. So, um, I've tried to read through this as much as I can, as well, Ron, and my recommendation is that we just adopt it. One of the best things about it, besides everything that's in here, which is the law, and what we can do is that, as Ron says, applications come in and there's a shot clock, you have to approve them. Rather than Ken even trying to get through this, we'll just send them to Pittsburgh, let them look at it and advise us.
Yeah, that's a- that's a- that's a reasonable thing for such a technical- Well, it's a technical thing. You need, you know, technical expertise. So we just need to do- I would make a motion then that we approve this zoning amendment.
Right, yeah. Robert, I don't mean to interrupt, but has this gone to Monroe County planning or not yet?
I don't think it's going there yet. It's gotta be reviewed by them too.
She wants to borrow those plans. She takes those plans. She wants to borrow those plans.
There you are.
So I have a question about this cell tower. We went through the magic cauldron, uh, a couple of years ago, and, you know, we had some objections and conditions. Ended up going into a lawsuit where they forced us to do whatever we- they wanted to do. So is this- is it things in this ordinance that is brought into a lawsuit? We have to comply, or they have to-
You have to understand, the lawsuit that was filed by Verizon Cell Tower at that time was before denied the conditional use. So they said, "This is federal law. You can't deny us. You can maybe establish conditions, but you can't deny it." And that's what caused the case to now be heard. Now, with this ordinance in place, again, it says you must have this report done. You must have this, uh, radio report done. You have to have this done. You have to have bonding. You have to have all these other things.
Okay, so there's nothing in here that is not as ordinary?
I don't see anything in here. And again, it's done by people who are-
Doing it all the time, yeah.
So-called, I don't mean in a bad way, you know?
No, I understand.
So-called experts in this field. And again, I'm somewhat familiar with it. I even spoke at a cell tower seminar a bit. And, uh, it's okay. Now, again, can you somewhat challenge it?
Sure.
Anyone can challenge anything, but I think it's okay.
So this is much meatier than what we have now?
I definitely much meatier. It covers everything plus the five G, which wasn't part of-
Right, five G wasn't part of it.
Our present ordinance, because it wasn't planned. Because it didn't exist.
You brought up five G a long time ago. You know, we should be cautious about it.
It wasn't even around then, when that cell tower ordinance was adopted.
Well, actually, I learned a lot about this, the magic cauldron case, uh, started getting into it and studying it. That's how I learned what was gonna happen, or happened, and for a reason, but I knew this.
Yeah, you talked about this about a year ago.
Yeah.
Alright, so you made a motion?
Yeah, I made a- I made a motion that we, uh, recommend approval of this.
Second.
Michael seconded. Any other discussion, gentlemen? No? All in favor? Aye? Doug, no? Doug says no. Alright, one nay. Okay. Oh, what are the grant notification letters, Robert? That you want- we have discussion of twenty seventeen Marshalls Falls DCRN grant notification. Discuss twenty twenty-one. I don't know why these are on our agenda, to be honest with you. Twenty twenty-one Marshalls Falls and twenty twenty-one Rivers Edge DCNR grant notification letter.
If you look at, for example, if you look at Mr. Chair, the, uh, one for twenty seventeen Marshalls Falls, people twenty, it's just as you indicated at the top of that second page.
Yeah, but we don't need to do anything with it.
There's a requirement that we must, that the, you know, that the planning commission is obligated of-
Okay.
You know, and it says here, a letter, it was sent to the commission in two thousand and seventeen. The DCR requires a letter of response from the local planning agency. So it looks like we may have to jump through a hoop or two and then just send a letter saying, "We looked at everything and it's okay."
Okay.
Can somebody tell me where Marshalls Falls is? Is it Reggie?
No, Marshalls Falls is Creek Road there, that's Indian Park, right? It's the Marshalls Falls.
I'm sorry, of course, got it, yes.
Yeah, that one. By the golf course. I was getting overrun. This- This is a letter what? This is a letter to develop it out into a proper-
Yeah, yeah.
Will it let it develop out into a proper park? I'm sorry. The grant is to help develop it out into a- into a- into a proper park and-
The grants have all been awarded, I guess.
Right.
Through a form that you were-
We're now notified.
The letter didn't come from the-
The letter didn't come from the planning commission on the D C R.
I, I make a motion, we prepare a letter that indicates that the planning commission agrees that the, uh, what is it called?
Oh, we've been notified. We've been, we've been duly notified.
No, but not notified. Hold on. It doesn't say, it says you have to say that, um, that, that the plans meet the short and long term recreational objectives of, uh, Smithfield Township, period.
Sounds good. Sounds perfect. I can do that letter and then thanks.
I have a question.
Yes.
Nine months ago, we shut that park down because of, I don't say vandalism, you know, spray painting.
Well, it was, but it was under run.
What, 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 going forward now, we're gonna make it more accessible, I presume. You're gonna quit, create a parking lot?
Well, for this summer, I don't think it'll be accessible at all because it should be under construction. So-
Does that residents stay there or does that go away? The residents, does it stay there?
Residents for the time being will stay. Eventually it'll go away, become part of the, the parking area, but we don't need it right now. Take down a barn and, you know, make that more of a parking area, but there's so many things that have to be done with building the trails and A D A access and so forth. I don't think it'll finish by some time.
Understood, but it, I mean, is there any issues with the future vandalism and profiting?
I'm sure there will be, but at least once it's finished, we can control it. Right now, you can't even get in.
Yeah, you can't get in there.
Yeah, you can't get in there.
And I don't know the situation as far as the orange, the summer, we had some last summer.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing I don't wanna do, which we did last summer, protect the property of the cell towers. They were complaining that people were parking in their parking lots, but my feeling is, put on your own Jersey barriers, not our problem.
Right, I remember you had somebody, you had somebody sitting there in a truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With this, sir, we, we, let them pay for it. They didn't wanna, they didn't wanna, uh, sell us the lot. Well, that's their problem.
Yeah.
So that, anyway, that's my feeling.
No, I, I understand. And what, what about, what's going on with the miniscule park and, and is that being patrolled because of all the people partying on the Broadhead?
Um, again, something we have to talk about. We haven't made any plans to secure it there.
Yeah.
Please do. Please do.
That was a disaster.
Yeah, it was, well, without the security, it was a catastrophe. It really was, Robert.
It just hasn't come up yet.
Okay.
Well, it's about to, it's about to get warm, so.
This, this Memorial Day weekend, you're gonna see a boat of people camping out on that Broadhead.
Depends on the weather.
Well, I'd much- I'd much- What'd you say, Michael? I'm sorry.
Just say, I'd much prefer to have security and have it be open than the alternative, which in the past was just to close the gates on busy weekends, which is crazy, 'cause then nobody can enjoy it.
Time off, apply number or go around.
I, I think it should be open. We just have to have some, uh, personnel.
Yeah, I think that just has to be, you know?
Up at the, the Stroud Township Park up off of, uh, Pitt Street, where it comes into the one ninety one, they actually had somebody there collecting a, a fee if you were from out of town. And I'm not suggesting that, I'm just stating the fact.
We enforce that. I know we discussed it. I think we went and offered it to the volunteer department that they were interested.
No, it's too far.
So I, I think, um, somebody just keep the campers buses there. We'll figure out something.
Okay. Yeah, the bus was the final straw and that was brutal. The other summer, I drove down there, it pulled over and the shoulder was a, was a, was the equivalent of a Greyhound bus, you know?
Yeah, that was, that was twenty nineteen.
Yeah, it was two years ago. That was nuts.
Yeah, they were just trashing that Broadhead Creek, which was sad. Okay.
It's, it's upcoming discussion.
So why don't we just accept these, these letters? Why don't we just say?
No, there's a, there's a, no, 'cause, 'cause in order for the grant to be completed, that Ron had to, Ron had to issue one back. That says we discussed, that's what Michael was saying, that has the, the language in it.
Oh, he did, yeah. Michael did all three, exactly.
Yeah, I think Michael did a motion on all three.
Yeah, Michael did the motion on all three. That's good.
So who seconded?
I'll second. Any other discussion? For all three letters? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye, all. Ayes have it. And with that, I make a motion we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Me too.
Me too. Good night, Michael.
Night, guys. Thanks.
Yep, it's twenty nine. You'll be there at clock.
What did I say? What did I say?
Could you see Alec and by eight? That's what he, and I said that an hour and a half, he said no.
Not gonna be.
Very well done, Mr. Eric Moore.
Thank you. Well, what's gonna come in June is gonna be much more, obviously.
Yeah.
It's a bigger thing and they're gonna, it's, look, I said, I'm, I know if I can make that meeting, so, I mean, I don't know if you need me, 'cause you're a lawyer, you know as much as I do. Oh, no, 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 no. If I'm sitting in your chair, I'm, I'm, I'm billing three hundred and ten dollars an hour, buddy.
Yeah.
I got news for you.
It's a big review, so I probably won't have it done much before the meeting.
Well, you know-
Take it a week beyond that.
It, yeah, I mean, we can do one of two, we can do one of two things. We can do that or you can ask them, or, or you can ask them directly in your review, if you can put it on the July meeting, 'cause it's large. It's up to you. I don't care.
Let me, let me see where we're at.
Okay, see where you're at, John.
But I won't dump it on you like Thursday morning or something.
Oh, no, 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 no. With something that's gonna be of that magnitude, it's gonna be, you know, sixty bullet points or something.
Do we hang on to these for next meeting or do they?
Yeah, that's what's gonna do.
Okay, I just leave them that one. Yeah, I love it. Believe me, we'll get more.
Here's mine, a triple pole.
We'll get more.
We're in the office, triple, and I sat on it with that big fat box and now it made it, but, you know, quite the back pole.
You actually, I mean, Mr. Chair, do you expect that to keep?
No.
Why doesn't, why don't we make a note that, that, keep them in a stack?
Actually, we have a stack for next time. There's no reason not. Hey, Robert, can we just, can we just have, can we just keep the, the, like, the big maps in a, in a stack for next time? Will you use them? I mean, is there a spot for lowest? Or do you wanna put them in the back corner on the, I mean, put them on the shelf back there or something? I mean, I mean, it's, yeah, why don't we do that?
You have the shelf on the bottom here if you wanna do the runner there, so.
Yeah, let's just do that. That's a good idea. And then we'll have them. Yeah, okay.
You gonna put them over there?
Yeah.
Take this way up there.
Thank you.
Not your plan?
All right. Have a good trip, James.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Great, where are you going? He and, uh, Chris are going, uh, they're, they're riding dirt bikes when they come with.
Okay.
Well, the guy he's going with is, is, uh, is the next generation of strong stuff product engineering company. And his wife is Vic in my office. Vic's my associate.
Okay.
So she's like that because, she's like, yeah, Chris is going tomorrow. They're going on their trip. They're like, okay. I can only imagine what bat, what handbags coming to the office delivered by the time this is done, 'cause he's a, he's a top second grader. So, I don't know. We're all before him. Yeah, yeah, I have, uh, I, 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 when I say it, I cannot believe that this, if you go through the Pittsburgh downtown, you go there, I forget the website that it's on. I have it. And I usually bring my iMac, so I have it exactly for that. Um, well, I find it, I send it around. No, it, it, it actually is through a codifying state. It's through a codifying service that does these, there has the hyperlink, so. Oh, really? Yeah, I'm gonna do. I have it, I have it.
Yeah, you send that to me, yeah.
But there's a bunch of stuff that I need to, to learn about.
You will.
Yeah, but I like to celebrate that. You must be retired.
And then the guy's-
That's you kind of, uh, hired.
Well, we're all close together.
I think so. Make it by mine tomorrow. Yeah, I did. A lot of my gas, if I get down there, I may not be able to. Actually, I, but I came up Sunday last night. I went to the gas station. It's only four miles from my house. So the pipeline moving attacked last night and that's how bad they were at the gas. Yeah, we've got gas, okay, but down there, it's a real thing.
Yeah, well, we're going to Harrisburg.
A little bit, I don't have enough gas to come home. But in Laysville, we went down yesterday. First one was trying to find one, two gas stands, filled up the car, two others, not as a good gas stand, because once you get down there, so I did one way, I could really get back to you. But I remembered it more or less thirty percent.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
I did a line, ran a standing in line and I was horrified. Exactly, yeah. So if you're, if you're curious about it, go to YouTube.
What are you getting into this for?
Swing into adventure trip.
And I see where I am. Getting into the, uh, out pattern of this.
Well, right, we got a little-
Yeah.
Well, you know, there was our initial, we're going on.
Yeah. All right, that's a long, that's a long process though.
Well, look at these bats.
Well, you can't, you can't, you're small. Is that a map of the township like this?
Um, it is.